I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslow. Cluke. Stube. Ingberg.
We have a couple of scouts with us tonight, and I'd like to invite them up to lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Troop 461?
Yes.
Thank you for coming out. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Have a proclamation tonight. I'd like to invite Mr. Gowan and Ms. Stratman. Kids to Parks Day. I think they were debating which one's the kid and which one's the parks. But whereas May 20th, 2023, is the 13th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. Whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. Whereas the City of Papillion encourages children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterol, some medical word I can't pronounce. Whereas Kids to Parks Day broadens children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Whereas the City of Papillion recognizes the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Whereas it is vital to introduce a new generation to our parks, and whereas the City of Papillion Parks are open to all children and adults, to encourage a diverse group of participants. Now therefore, I, David Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2023, as Kids to Park Day. Be it further resolved, I urge all residents of the City of Papillion, Nebraska, to make time May 20th to take the children and their lives to a park. Want to share anything?
Sure, I'll go first. We've got two minutes, Mayor, so I'll go one minute. Tracy, go the other one. I had to write everything down. I can't remember anything, and we've been so busy. Yeah, there's a lot of things for the kids to do in these parks that you have so graciously allowed us to improve over the years, and just a few that are going on right now and have been completed. Overland Hills Park, we have an Eagle Scout that's going to be installing a gaga ball pit up there. That'll go along with the ping pong tables that are outside and the cornhole up there. Garden Street Park, I'm sure you've seen on the Facebook page, has been completed. Really a nice update to that park. We put a drinking fountain in for both humans and dogs there, too, so that was cool. Seventh Street Park, the new interactive equipment should be here in about three weeks. That will be a fun play competition, using lights and sound for team competition, and also limited mobility. People cannot go up there, too, in place. That'd be cool. Eagle Ridge Park, we're putting in Matt Kovar's storybook walk right now. That's going in. And we just updated some concrete around the splash pad area to make it a little bit more of a user-friendly and not-so-muddy up there, and more areas for parents to put bag chairs up there, too, to sit around and watch their kids. And then in Hallock Park, the big news is the Papio Pekins finally returned, the ducks down there, and got those in. And then the tennis court was just finished up this past week over there for the resurfacing. It looks really good. Very, very pleased with that. So that's what's going on right now with the Parks Department.
For the Rec Department, we're more on the activating of Tony's Beautiful Parks. The things we have coming up are the big thing that we're working towards is the Northern National Softball Tournament. That's a regional tournament that's going to take place at the Landing Complex. We've also increased our day camps, specifically the one at Tara. Tara Park is going to double in size. Instead of just four weeks last year, we're going to do eight weeks this coming summer. That's in partnership with the Volunteer Fire Association outside of that for the building. Yeah, and just everything we can do as we get ready for the summer and have a presence at Sumter as well as Papio Bay.
Thank you both for everything you do. Appreciate it. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. I have just a couple of quick things. Congratulations to our Full-Time Employee of the Year, Kathy Mattern, and Part-Time Employee of the Year, Doug Bickel. Kathy is a sergeant with the Police Department and leads our CLIA certification each year. And Doug retired from the city two years ago. He was a longtime line locator, and he now came back to us in a part-time capacity for the Public Works Department. So congratulations to them. They're voted on by their peers and selected and nominated, so it's a huge honor for them, so congratulations. And then thank you to the Papillion and La Vista Public Works Departments for another successful cleanup days. I know I talk about it each time, but I just want to just, I guess, point out that we really appreciate this collaboration with La Vista. It's pretty taxing on the employees to put this on each year, so we really appreciate having the partnerships, we're able to spread that between our staff and La Vista staff. So it's working out great, and again, it was another successful year for that. So thanks to everyone involved. I know it's a lot of work. And then just a couple of quick things coming up. The Sarpy County Senior Olympics will be held on May 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the Landing Fieldhouse, so that's next week. And this is a fun community event, and I invite anybody to come out if you even just want to watch or if you want to participate. There's no judgment here, 55-plus. But stop by any time that morning or early afternoon, and you could check out all the fun. And then the last thing is the Papillion Half Marathon, the 10K and 5K fun run. That's scheduled for May 21st at the Landing. And then let myself or Tracy know if you want to volunteer. There's several volunteer opportunities, water stations, different things. So if you want to do that, let either one of us know, and we'll get you in that and involved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 1992, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the City of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Cluke. D2, Ordinance 1993, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the City of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the City of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901, and to provide for an effective date. It's related to the previous item. Is there a councilman that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 1995, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1997, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from MU Mixed Use to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as Lot 205, Founder's Ridge, generally located on the southwest corner of South 126th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Carlson Consulting Engineers, Founder's Ridge Senior Living. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Thank you. We'll note that the representative is here. Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Thank you. Item F1, Ordinance 1973, an ordinance to approve a change of... The next 13 items are all related. So it's all for Granite Creek, which is on the south side of Lincoln, west of 96th. The first seven are Granite Creek East, which is 96th to 102nd, and then the next six are Granite Creek West, which would be about 102nd to 103rd or 104th, somewhere in there. So item one of seven, F1, Ordinance 1973, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multi-Family Residential, R4 PUD2 Multi-Family Residential with a specific planned unit overlay, and LC Limited Commercial for the property legally described as attractive land. I'll read it slow the first time after this. I'm going to read it fast. Part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, and part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, all in Section 28, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 96th and Lincoln Road. The applicant's BHI Development, Granite Creek East. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1973? Motion by Councilman Fanslow? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item two of seven, and I believe I have to read the legal every time, so bear with me. Item F2, Resolution R230072. It's a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land, being part of the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, part of the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, part of the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, part of the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, part of the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter, and part of the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, all in Section 28, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southwest corners of 96th and Lincoln Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230072? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R230073. It's a public hearing and a vote on the related item. It's a resolution to approve the Granite Creek East subdivision agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Welcome. And if you just state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Lamontaine, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'm here on behalf of BHI Development. I'm going to try to figure out how to use this thing here. Seen it used, but I haven't done the details. Okay, just to clarify what we're looking on the map here, we have actually two SIDs that are being discussed tonight. So E&amp;A Consulting is working with the SID that is east of 102nd. This is 96th Street. And then Randy with Lampre Nielsen will be using the same map later for his presentation. So I'm not going to spend too much time, because everyone's very familiar with this, but we just have R4 zoning with some light commercial on these three lots. And then we have a multifamily lot here, and then this is a PUD that's going to have duplexes, and then the rest is single-family homes. And then we have a proposed splash park in the yellow area, and then a proposed school in the purple area there. So it's a total of 188 single-family homes, and the three commercial lots, the total valuation, we estimate is $154 million. And there's going to be very nice trails that I'm personally going to benefit as I live up in Granite Lake. I'm excited to see the trail system that's going to connect to the existing trail that comes up through this way that goes under the underpass. So I know there's a lot of excitement about that. The treat area in the corner here is going to stay, and it'll just be a nice environment for people to walk up to the Papio Trail, walk over to the Landing, and it's just going to really connect everything very well with the surrounding communities. Really, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any... Mr. Stube?
Jeff, I always like to get an idea. Obviously, we see grading going on. Can you kind of give us an idea, Randy, maybe the same thing, with regard to when is all this going to take place? Obviously, grading going on. I think we talked a little bit about a number of questions. So one thing would be status of streets, buildings, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? I think there was discussion about improving the underpass going underneath 370 with that connection taking place. I also see grading going on on the south side of 370, so there's a lot of activity going on. So kind of give us an idea as far as what the timeline with regard to all that.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, the grading is substantially complete on our piece. There is some grading activity going on on the south side to finish things up. We're just hoping for approval and get the plat recorded so that we can start on sanitary pipe construction. As you can, if you've driven by there, they have the pipe out there and ready to go, so we're looking forward to that. We have a storm sewer that'll follow that, and paving is probably going to be sometime next spring or summer. So with the trail to follow as building foundations and homes start filling up, and we have a trail connection. We can show it on another drawing here. The underpass will be part of the trail connection, and we actually have an updated drawing that we've worked with the city that I don't have with me, but it's going to actually connect this piece here, and so it'll be able to go in both directions, so.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230073? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item four of seven, F4, Resolution R230074. It's a public hearing and a vote, a request to approve the Granite Creek East Planned Unit Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. We'll carry the previous comments over for the minutes unless you want to repeat something. Do we have any proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230074? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Stube? Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item five of seven, F5, Resolution R230075, a resolution to approve the Granite Creek East Sewer and Water Connection Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230075? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Six of seven, F6, Resolution R230076, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement between Granite Creek Development LLC and the City of Papillion for the Granite Creek East Woodland Parkland acquisition. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230076? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. And the last of the Granite Creek East items, F7, Ordinance 1982, an ordinance to rename Mesa Street as dedicated by the Overland Hills Five Final Plat to be South 97th Street. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1982? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Cluke? Any discussion? I think it's important to note, just in case anybody's watching, we're changing an existing street name. There are no houses or businesses on that street, so nobody's affected there. Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. We'll move to the Granite Creek West, which is 102nd Street West, up towards the junior high. Item F8, Ordinance 1986, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multi-Family Residential and R4 PUD2 Multi-Family Residential with a specific planned unit overlay for the property legally described as part of the southwest quarter of Section 28, together with part of the north half of Section 33, all in Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest and southwest corners of South 102nd Street and Highway 370. Applicant's BHI Development and its Granite Creek West. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1986? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Ingberg. Staff is recommending a motion to amend Exhibit A of the ordinance to add out Lot C to the PUD2, because it's going to have a recreational component for the PUD2. Is there a motion to amend ordinance 1986? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Stube? Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion on the motion to amend? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion is amended. Any council discussion on the motion is amended? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. F9, Resolution R230077, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of the southwest quarter of Section 28, together with part of the north half of Section 33, all in Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest and southwest corner of South 102nd Street and Highway 370. Applicant's BHI Development, Granite Creek West. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230077? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. F10, Resolution R230078. It's a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Granite Creek West subdivision agreement. Public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Good evening. Randy Kuchak with Lampre Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska, here on behalf of the applicant, BHI Development, Inc., joined tonight, obviously, by Mr. Lamontay with E&amp;A Consulting. Just want to first of all, thank staff on this project. Obviously, a lot of players in this one, a big project, massive, really, with two consulting firms, a lot of effort from staff in the planning department and the public works department. Very much appreciated to finally get here on this. In front of you tonight, obviously, we've heard on the Granite Creek East side, Grant Creek West side, not going to rehash the stats on this unless we want to get into it, but just to bring up the subdivision agreements for these two developments, the developer looks to do this as one project. The source and use of funds really were balanced between the two with coordination between E&amp;A and ourselves and Mr. Sullivan, who is the SID attorney for both. So overall, very appreciative for working with staff on this one. Feels like we just started it, and things are moving quickly. To Councilman Stube's question earlier, just a little bit more expansion on what we've got going there. With this being two SIDs, there's two separate contracts for all of the public improvements, which means we have two contractors to tear through those public improvements faster than if this was just a single SID, single contract. So we anticipate two crews out for all of the public improvements. There's a little bit of carryover in the sanitary and the paving with the same contractor winning both pieces, but we expect things to move quick. Paving certainly will be finishing up next year, but we hope to get some pavement down still this year. This is a one-phase project, so of the improvements that are identified as upfront, we plan to work through those. And then of the items that have been out there a little bit in the future, the developer is very interested in as soon as he can moving on the splash pad, as he knows there's interest in the area for that. So we anticipate movement. We anticipate houses going quick once we get there, and we certainly plan to see some of that next year. With all of our contracts out or bid except for the highway improvements, we received comments back from the state that were very minor, so we expect to see those coming very soon. So we anticipate moving very quickly and seeing a subdivision growing very quick this year at the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230078? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote. Mr. Ingberg?
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. F11, Resolution R230079, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Granite Creek West Planned Unit Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230079? Motion by Mr. Mumgarth? Second by Mr. Fanslow. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. F12, Resolution R230080, resolution to approve the Granite Creek West Sewer and Water Connection Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230080? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item F13, Ordinance 1994, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Chapter 100, currently entitled Buildings Unsafe, to be amended to be entitled Property Maintenance, to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition with local amendments to adopt procedures for enforcement and appeal, to repeal Chapter 89, entitled Brush, Grass, and Weeds, and Chapter 137, entitled Nuisances, to amend Chapter 9 and Sections 92-1 and 92-9 to define the code official and to provide for a Board of Appeals to move Section 137-4 regarding plastic bags to new Section 12524, to amend Chapter 184, now to be entitled Abandoned Vehicles, to amend Chapter 206 to include references to nuisances under Chapter 100, to repeal the amended sections as previously enacted and to provide for an effective date. It's the Property Maintenance Code. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1994? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Ingberg. Mr. Sunday?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the motion as shown in the first motion to amend, which each council member has in front of them, and I know the mayor's going to read those changes here momentarily. If anybody has any questions, now would be the time to ask them.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Ingberg. And so we have a motion to amend with a second, and just so people understand what it is, I will recap it real quick. Section 120, which is the general section, add a new last sentence that says, "Any policies or procedures adopted by the code official pursuant to this section shall be enumerated in a general order." Section 134, violation penalties, change the six months to three months, so lower that. In Section 143, subsection A, the very last portion where it talks about partial or incomplete collapse is possible, change "possible" to "a significant concern." In Section 173, amendments, Section R402-1, which is habitable spaces, on exception number one, it's just a typo in the first sentence where it talks about the adjoining room. It's going to change groom to room. In Section 5, 9-40, Rules and Procedures, Item G about open hearing, where it ends with, "The hearing shall be audibly recorded." It's going to add, "And the recording in its entirety shall be preserved for purposes of an appeal until the later of one, the time for appeal has expired, or two, any appeal has been fully and finally resolved." And then last is 184-4 violations. It's going to make the same change from six months down to three months. Any questions on the motion to amend? Any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Council discussion. Mr. Stube?
Yeah, I just have a general question with regard to, I'm assuming six months is kind of a standard, or why change to three? I'm just kind of curious. I don't have an issue with either one.
A Class II misdemeanor is punishable by $1,000 fine and six months in jail. A Class III is five A Class III is $500 fine and three months in jail. Those are maximums. And what we're doing, the way it was, is we're kind of creating a hybrid, which isn't a good idea, so I thought it should be one or the other, and opted for the Class III.
Which is the lower of the two. Any other questions on the motion to amend? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes, so the motion is amended. Any council discussion? I do want to make one quick comment, just for the public that may be watching, because there's been a lot of conversation with this over the number of years. The Property Maintenance Code, the intent of it is to work with public health, safety, and welfare, and to kind of set some minimum standards in that area. The impetus that I think really got the discussion going is, back in 2021, people may remember that there was a property in Papillion on Kilkenny Circle where a gentleman had 652 animals in the house. And because we did not have a property maintenance code, we couldn't declare a nuisance, so we didn't have the enforcement action, and it got pretty far down the road, and I don't know if the house is going to have to end up being destroyed. I think somebody might have bought it finally, might be flipping it, but I don't know if it's salvageable. But anyway, the gentleman is in jail, I think he was finally adjudicated in the courts. But then, since then, we've had a commercial building that's been vacant for quite a while that's had a large piece of siding gone, and mold's being created, and it's just a vacant space. And again, without, absent the property maintenance code, we can't declare a nuisance, we don't have an enforcement action. And then, some individual council members have brought some examples of individual homes that have had, like, pieces of the house missing, so animals going in and out. And it's been a real balance and discussion about, do you need a property maintenance code because individuals have property rights, they should be able to do what they want to on their property? But at some point, if it's not maintained, it affects the property rights of the neighbors, and so it's that balance and that discussion. And so, we referred it to the Public Safety Committee, which is four city council members, Councilwoman Cluke, Councilman Glover, Councilman Mumgarth, and Councilman Ingberg, and they worked through the model code, I don't know, over a 12 to 18-month period, it seems like, to look at it section by section, to say, of the model code, how does it apply to Papillion? And then, should we make any adaptations so it better fits Papillion? And I think you actually softened it a little bit, so we're not as strict as the model code. And so then, the Public Safety Committee then did make a recommendation to adopt it with the amendments, and went to the Planning Commission, who then did vote and make a recommendation, and now it's at council. So, a long history that started with the 652 animals in the house, and been talking about some other items. But council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
I'm just going to build off of what you were saying. During the public hearing at our last meeting, one of the opponents asked a question and wanted to know, "Why is this necessary?" I thought that was an excellent question, and it does, we can prove here that we do listen during public hearings. You've just identified several instances that there's going to be a difference made now because of the code. It took less than a day after that public hearing, and there was an email from a resident of Ward 4, who lives behind a house on Carey Street, which has had these problems for, well, I'll say years, because I think it's been that long. I was talking, I was discussing it with staff last fall, and being told there wasn't much we could do because of situations in the house. The house is boarded up, this resident was complaining, asking, "Why can't we fix this? There's raccoons over there, it's affecting my property." Well, that was within a day of the public hearing we had this email, sending us pictures of this house. Well, I asked staff, "Okay, what difference is this property management code going to do for this one house?" And they came up with six items that will allow the city to try to help this neighboring person get this house fixed. That clearly shows to me the need for something like this. Yeah, we don't, these types of codes can be abused, I don't expect our staff to ever abuse that, I think the citizens can step in, but I can tell you that just this one example in Ward 4, there are people living around that house that are going to be very, very glad if we adopt this code and we can fix that problem that their neighbor has created for them. So, from that standpoint alone, I'm saying, hip, hip, hooray, let's pass this.
Ms. Cluke.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for the comments up front. I agree with every one of them that you said, but I will debate with you when it started for us separately, because I will tell you, I've been looking at it for about three years now, when we had a constituent come to me, made a phone call, almost in tears, about what was happening to her daughter and son-in-law, and it was over a fence. And at that point, I sat down and looked at the code, and I went, "This is all opinion-based, and opinion-based is not a great way to work out difficulties between anyone. We need facts, we need hard written things that everybody reads and hopefully interprets the same way." So that's when the ball kind of got started rolling for me, working with many of the other council members sitting around here. So, just wanted to say, some of us have been really looking at this for a long time, and I'm grateful to every council member who took an interest in this, who's had an input on this, because it's been a long time since it was brought to one of our subcommittees. I agree with what Councilman Mumgarth said, there are going to be many instances where people are going to now be able to say, "This is not an opinion, this is what our city recommends we keep our maintenance of our homes and buildings looking like." So I appreciate everybody who had input on it. I'm very hopeful for this, I know I'm going to be voting for it, and the last thing I want to do is say thank you to city staff. We had hours and hours and hours from multiple different departments put in on this. I found times when we had our department heads working well into the evening, burning up multiple hours beyond their standard 40 hours that they're supposed to work, just being dedicated to understanding that this truly is a quality of life for our citizens here in Papillion. So, I'm hopeful for the vote, but most importantly, I want to say thank you to those department members who really put in the hours to make a difference and to make it the best we possibly can to start with.
Thanks for your patience, because I know it took longer than you had hoped. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of the committee that worked on that as well, if I could, just to clarify a couple of things in addition to what you said, when we first started talking about this International Property Maintenance Code, I think it's important for the public to understand that we didn't just take this and slim it down or change some of the wording, it went beyond that. One thing that we didn't have, that if this is passed, we will have, is some clarification, because we took a lot of what we already had, and we combined it, and we put it in a logical form, because before that, if a citizen even had a question about a nuisance, or, for example, abandoned vehicle, the difference between public property right-of-way and private property, even our own staff had struggled with, who's responsible to enforce it, and what do we do? What we did is we codified a lot of areas and made it logical and easy for people to deal with, and it makes it a lot easier for our staff to deal with. As you said, Mayor, it also gave us some tools that we didn't have before. It's really difficult to tell people when they have a concern that, "Oh, we really can't do much." As Councilman Mumgarth said, I, as well, in my ward, there's a house that I discovered once the area changed, I was tasked with this area, there is a house there that had a placard that would made it not habitable since 2016, and it was still sitting there empty, and there were raccoons crawling out of the ceiling, there were vermin everywhere, and all it took, before this was even passed, just an explanation to the absentee owner that this was coming, that now if you go by there, it has brand-new siding, it has a tenant, everything's been fixed. But this isn't designed just for rental properties either. And two words I want to also mention, because we were talking, there was a mention about property rights, when I saw that initially, when Councilmember Cluke first showed it to me, when he talked about searching a residence, those type of things, alarm bells went off with me right away, because 20 years in the police business, when I see searching something, I get concerned. I will tell you that the whole purpose of having that verbiage in there is, as I believe Councilmember Sunday and I think Mumgarth both said last time, in order for us to do anything inside of a residence where the owner or the tenant doesn't, won't grant us access, you're going to have to go back to a judge, and convince a judge the legality of it. And that answered one real concern I had. And maybe more importantly, there's two words I put forth when we first started working on this, and we adopted it early on, I think, all of us did on the committee, and that's these two words, compassionate enforcement. Our goal isn't to start hammering people or property owners over the head, we want to help people to get their property back to a quality of life that, for them and for their neighbors. You know, we may have some people that can't afford to do it, that are homeowners, or senior citizens, or they're just having a difficult time. We're going to try to find avenues to help them with that. We're going to be compassionate about it. And to make sure it's going okay, Councilmember Cluke can correct me, but we initially decided that if we're going to do that, we've asked Brad, the chief building official, after we do the first four enforcements, whatever they might be, we want to get together as a committee and meet with Brad to review how it went, is there anything he discovered the first four times we've used it that needs to be tweaked, or adjusted, or added to, or taken away from? And then, that point forward, we'd like, as a council, have him give us a quarterly report of how many complaints there have been, and how they've been dealt with, and so far, Brad was very, thank you Brad, been very receptive to that request. But I think this is going to be valuable, it's certainly already seen a change, and it hasn't even been adopted yet, just the idea of it has caused some positive things, like Councilman Mumgarth said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fenslow.
So, I wasn't around when the committee started their work, so thanks to the committee, the Public Safety Committee, for putting all the hard work into this. I know it's, I mean, this document's not very small, and there's a lot to it, so I guess I'd like to thank the Public Safety Committee, I'd like to thank staff, all the staff for working with the Public Safety Committee. I started, once this went to Planning Commission, right before I went to Planning Commission, I started peeling through it, and I finished up my conversation about that tonight with Luann. Before we met, she answered a few questions, so I'll be supporting this as well. I'd like to note that the constituent from Mr. Mumgarth and Mr. Stube's ward sent a letter of support in, so I think everybody has that, I happen to know her, so I knew she was going to do that. And lastly, I was at a homeowner's association meeting last night, and I probably talked to maybe a dozen people, and maybe more than half of those I brought this up, and it was everybody I've talked to at that meeting and just around the town, around the city the last couple of months has been supportive of this, so I think it's a real good document, and like I said, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. I am also in support of this, and I'll tell you why, it's because the safeguards are in place to protect people's due process, and there aren't, I mean, I'm confident there won't be abuse of this, I think the staff's fully aware that we don't want that. This is not going to be a situation where we have a bunch of proactive house police roaming the city looking for a violation, that's not what this is. This is reactive to complaints from other citizens that have to live around problem houses if they exist in the neighborhood, and then we investigate if there's reasonable cause to go in. Once we're denied entry, if there's reasonable cause, we can go ask a judge, and if he or she agrees, then we can go in. There's safeguards in place, and that's why I support this. Thank you.
And I'll note, one of the safeguards is actually then, an ability to appeal, and there's an appeals board that's created as part of this, and so just anybody listening, and I can't remember how many members are on the appeal board, it's either five or eight, and so that is, those will be mayor oral appointments that'll be coming to you, and those have to be individuals that are at least familiar with this, they're in the trades, they're in property maintenance, they're in something like that, so if somebody has an interest in being appointed to that board, and they're in the trades, they're in construction, they're in property maintenance, real estate, reach out to City Hall, and we'll start collecting names, and then sometime soon, we'll put names forward for that board. So, pass those names on if you have them. Mr. Gaines.
So, I also want to thank the Public Safety Committee for putting the work in. Luann, I know you've worked hard on this. Unfortunately, I'm not real comfortable with the way that this document's written. It's not going to change, obviously, because, you know, I know the amount of people that are in favor of it, but just as, I'll just give a couple of examples, and there's quite a few throughout here, but Section 100-22, it states that, "Whenever a code official has reasonable cause to believe that there exists in a structure or upon a premises a condition in violation of this code, the code officials authorized to enter the structure or premises," so on and so forth, I won't read the whole thing. Point being is, they, after they're denied entry, then they give notice of violation, and then there may be some due process after that, but just the mere fact that this ordinance, technically, authorizes them to enter your home, that's just what it says. The second issue I have with it is that this is, being passed is a strict liability crime, which, not to get too in-depth into it, but long story short, it doesn't matter why it's like that, it just matters that it's like that. It doesn't offer our citizens any chance to offer any sort of proof, let's just say, for example, citations written, you go to court, the only thing the prosecutor has to prove is that this happened. There's just no excuse for it, it either happened or it didn't, and if it happened, you're in violation of it, regardless of the reason that it happened. It's a very large document, it's hard to comb through word by word, sentence by sentence, I get that, I just, I'm not comfortable with it, and there's several other examples, but I'm not going to, I won't spend the rest of you guys' time going through this, but I do appreciate the hard work, I do feel it was necessary. I live very close to one of these homes that kind of spurred this, so I get the concept of it, I'm just not going to be voting for it, for those reasons and a few others, so thank you.
Thank you, and I think it's important to note what Mr. Ingberg mentioned, that as this, if it does get approved, and as it goes, we're going to periodically sanity check it back with committee, so there will be opportunities then, if needed, to amend it ongoing. One other question that came back last time, and I had somebody ask about a rental inspection program, which some other jurisdictions have, this is not a rental registration, it's not a rental inspection program, so it's not, it doesn't go that far, we don't have that program in place, and this is not setting the stage for that, so just wanted to make that clear as well. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yes, one nay by Gaines.
Motion passes. Item F14, Resolution R230071, a resolution to approve a wage adjustment for the position of city administrator based on a market study of comparable positions. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230071? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Cluke. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
Now, this one I will be in support of. I can tell you, Amber, since you've been here, you've been great to work with, I appreciate your opinion, I appreciate your communication, you've made the city a better place, I think you've helped the entire staff of the city, so I'll be 100% in support of this.
Thank you. Mr. Fenslow.
I'll repeat what Jason said, great, well-deserved, and you've been extremely helpful to me my first six months on the councils, I'll be supporting as well.
And I'll share a little bit, too, when she was hired, I think we each took a risk on each other. She was unknown to us, and she didn't really, didn't really know each other, it'd come from a lot smaller community, a different state with different rules, and so there was, and she was replacing two administrators that literally had 50 years of experience, and so then we're getting somebody that doesn't have the history and the knowledge, so we didn't pay, we weren't the most aggressive on the pay, because we were taking a little bit of a risk, but to your points, it's proven out, and I think we're, this adjustment's bringing it up to the market of where it should be, so. So appreciate the comments. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eight aces, zero nays.
Motion passes, thank you. It's all the regular agenda items, committee reports, F and A committee, Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a couple items on the, our agenda tonight. The first one was an update on the 2023 annexation number three. After discussion and looking at the updated numbers we received from Travis, the committee recommends three to one to proceed with the annexation under option two. Option two is annexing of the industrial SIDs with Walnut Creek Hills with the park improvement allowance. So we recommend we move forward three to one vote, or not vote, we can't vote, the recommendation. Other item was a discussion on citywide trash haulers, the RFP. We basically spent time clarifying for the Public Works Director what items the committee wanted to include in a fact-finding situation to help us discuss further, us meaning the committee, to discuss further the feasibility of going forward in any fashion with the sole vendor. But I want to caution people that watch this, there's no decision, nobody's decided anything yet, we're simply gathering information, and we'll go from there, and that's all we had.
Thank you very much, and I don't think any other committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Larry Cherney, 301 North Osage Street. This is a hooray. We thank the council, the city and so forth, for the major upgrade that they did at the Garden Street Park. It's used tremendously now, and even the dog water that's in the fountain, it's perfect. So thank you once again for all your efforts.
That a lot, thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Welcome.
Edward Wanniger, 1709 Ridge Drive. I just want to comment on the code enforcement, I know we, you guys obviously passed it, but it, just hearing some of the comments from council tonight, just the whole compassionate enforcement, you know, gave, had vibes of mask mandates again, and, you know, that was no problem for the council to trample on civil liberties then. So it's still certainly concerning to me that, as was pointed out, there's warrantless property entry, and, you know, the fact that we're not going to have roving bans of housing enforcement agents looking for infractions is exactly why the existing code could have worked if we had had roving bans of housing enforcement agents finding problems and solving them within the existing code. So, you know, government is not to be trusted, in my opinion, and easily abused, and so hopefully that will not play out someday when you guys are not in power, but somebody else is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Council comments? Mr. Gaines.
Just wanted to point out one thing. I never mentioned anything about warrantless searches, per se, but it does on its face, it's asking for consent. The ordinance states that they shall have permission to enter, but you still have to give consent to come in. I disagree with the way that it's written, so I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. H and H had a groundbreaking for their next facility, a Kia operation out at Steel Ridge, they're making major investments out there, we appreciate them moving to Papillion. The, I think you remember, we created a Papillion chapter of the First Responders Foundation to help raise philanthropy support for police and fire, and we just had another board meeting there. It's going very well. And then Gross Sarpie, the Economic Development Corporation, just had its regular quarterly meeting. Most of it was just the new director, Michael Rooks, who's been here, just introducing himself. The encouraging thing, I think he's going to continue to be involved in what I would say are smaller items to benefit us from economic development. The Economic Development Corporation historically just wanted the large home runs, the Googles and the Facebooks. Michael's attitude, I think, is more of, those only come once every three, four, five years, and we need to be working on things in the interim. And he's already brought a couple of things to staff, and we've had a couple of meetings. But I think the developer was very appreciative of that, so good relationship with Gross Sarpie. ALO had its groundbreaking ceremony, thanks for everybody that was here. We're getting a number of questions on that one, ALO's the fiber network that's coming. There is another provider, a different provider, that is building out in Bellevue, and that provider is using subcontractors for their work. They're tearing into some people's yards, they're not replacing the work, and it's pretty active negative discussion on social media, and some of that conversation's carrying over, is ALO going to do the same thing? At the groundbreaking, they addressed that straight on and mentioned that the install staffs are their own employees, they're not subcontractors, their customer service staff is their own employees, they're going to have a presence in the community from a customer service perspective. And they also published a number that if a homeowner has an issue, they can call, and they'll come out and fix that item. So if you get any complaints, one, direct them to ALO's website, there's a Papillion page, and they can put a complaint in there, and then if that's not working, let us know. But so far, they've been extremely responsive. Mr. Gaines, I know you had some interactions on that, they've been very, very responsive, so, and then I've talked to some mayors around the state who have ALO, and they said they hold up to their word. So if you hear anything negative at all, or anybody has negative experience, raise it up, because I'm confident it'll be addressed. And a couple of other restaurant ribbon cuttings, Willby's, which used to be a food truck, opened up over on 72nd and 370 behind Starbucks, and then we had the Arbor Day ceremony as well, so appreciate everybody that came out for that. Just again, there were a couple of the reminders of things coming up, the UBS is going on again this summer, that's the one where they're grinding down the streets, fix the underlayment, and then come over with that overlay. That work is going on now, it started this week, and that's between 72nd and 84th from Hallock to Cedar Dale. So if you have any questions on that, let staff know. Mentioned the Senior Olympics, there's a ribbon cutting on May 16th at 11:00 a.m. for the Gardens Center that's in downtown Papillion behind the Runza. It's a wonderful little place, so go back and visit if you haven't, and they're going to, and then at 11:00 a.m. on the 16th, they're going to have a ribbon cutting. On the 18th, at 8:30 in the morning, the chambers have a state of county, so if you want to go to that, let Robin know, and she can RSVP for that. And then the 10K was mentioned, but then also May 20th at 8:45 is the Nation of Patriots Tour. That's the one where it's a single US flag was flown over the Capitol, it's being brought to Papillion. There'll be a ceremony to give it off to a motorcycle tour group, and that single flag will tour all 50 states with motorcycles, and it'll over 115 days, and then it'll return to Papillion to be handed off for the next year. It's about, I think, the 14th year of the nationwide tour, it's the first time it's been held outside of Wisconsin, and Papillion won the bid, so we think it's a pretty big deal. The police department is working with them to give a formal escort from Sumter Amphitheater to the National Cemetery before they go off on their 115-day tour. So that will be on May 20th at about 8:45 in the morning, at Sumter Amphitheater. Any other council discussion? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Eight aces, zero nays.
We are adjourned.